Good evening and welcome to the Town of Chatham Planning Board meeting for March 25, 2024. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both in person and with remote access. I'll also mention that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify us. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're connected remotely. All right, there being none, we'll go ahead. As I mentioned, this is a hybrid meeting, and I'll read a few points about that pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL 30A 20. Until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, and the conference ID number is 533-195-598. Or you may join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that's in the agenda that's posted on the town website. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And just to mention, we did have some Internet issues earlier today. So again, if we do lose remote access, we are in person here at the Town Annex, and the meeting will continue, and we will post a record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So let's take a roll call of board members. Art Spru? Art Spru, present. Warren Chain? Warren Chain, present. Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, present. Charlene Greenhouse? Charlene Greenhouse, present.
Right, and we're happy you're present. Frank Scherer? Present. And Bob Dubis?
Bob Dubis, present. And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. Are there any
board members? I can't really see any matters, but who would need to recuse themselves from any matters? There's nothing actually that's recusable on the agenda tonight. All right, so then let's go to our minutes from February 26. Are there any changes or corrections, additions to the minutes? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted? Madam Chair, I move approval. May I have a second? Thank you. Frank has seconded. So let's do a vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve. Warren Chain? Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wertschafter? Bob Wertschafter, approve. Charlene Greenhouse? Charlene Greenhouse, approve. Frank Scherer? Approve. And Bob Dubis? Bob Dubis, approve. And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So next item on our agenda is to continue reviewing and considering our long-range planning efforts. And the first item is the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and I believe included in your packets is a copy with the draft language integrated that was drafted for us by Cape Cod Commission to address the open issues in the draft bylaw, which were involving certain unintended consequences that we wanted to keep, to regulate. They have been reviewed by Town Council and integrated in the draft. This is, I know that you received this just shortly before the meeting, so what we thought we'd do tonight is just an initial review, and we'll have more time to go more deeply into it at our next meeting. But I think, Katie, did you want to go through some of the points with the board?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the Chair mentioned, the draft language was worked on by the Cape Cod Commission, our staff from the Cape Cod Commission, as well as myself and our Housing and Sustainability Director Gloria McPherson. We have reviewed the language with Town Council. You may recall that initially Town Council had suggested that we come up with specific special permit criteria to deal with the year-round restrictions. However, when we created additional language, especially within the density section, the language was prescriptive enough that Town Council did not feel that we needed additional special permit criteria. And as we go through, I'll point out in Section 4, language that he added specific to that. So I think what we're hoping is that we are fairly close on language for dealing with the year-round deed restrictions, for the density bonuses specifically. So if you give me just a moment, I will share my screen, and then I'll just Okay, so I'm happy to answer questions as we go along, or you can save your questions till the end if you have any, but I'll just begin with-
It looks good. Let's go home.
We're laughing, but to be honest, when Katie and I spoke earlier this, today, I had the same reaction. But let's, I go through it.
I don't, I don't expect that it'll take too long, but just, so for the board's information, but as well as for the public, folks that may be watching along on Channel 18. So under the purpose, there was an additional point added, which would be to provide a mechanism by which residential development can contribute to year-round housing in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center by requiring market rate units permitted through density bonus provisions by special permit to include units that are deed restricted for year-round use. In Section 2, under applicability, we actually struck a sentence from there. It just, it didn't seem necessary. It's something that we do anyway, so it was just, we thought it would be, it's a little cumbersome, so we decided to strike that. Let's see. So under Section 4, under procedure, you'll see specifically in the blue section, this is language that was added by Town Council. And so after the first sentence where it calls out the Planning Board being the special permit granting authority, it also states, "The special permit shall be issued in accordance with the requirements of this section, as well as the general special permit criteria set forth in Section 8(c)(4) of this bylaw." So those are the general special permit criteria that all special permits need to meet.
Just, Katie, just a question on that. Assuming that there's a disagreement and there's an appeal to a special permit decision by this board, is it clear what that procedure is, and is the Planning Board the determinant of the appeal? And if so, is that appropriate, I guess?
No, typically, I mean, the Planning Board would be the special permit granting authority, so any decision that would be appealed, it would be appealed the same way a zoning board's special permit would be appealed, and that would be through Superior Court.
Oh, out of the town completely. So that's clear if you just know that it's the same procedure as, as if we were not the special permit granting authority. Good, thank you.
Any other questions regarding Section 4? Okay, so then we did add a few definitions first. And again, please note that the definitions here are used specifically for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So in this case, attainable housing would be a dwelling unit reserved in perpetuity for a household earning 80% to 125% of area median income for Barnstable County, as adjusted by size of household. And again, although other, there may be attainable housing definitions that may go up to 200% for this specific bylaw, this would be up to 125, and I think that was a request made by the Planning Board a number of months ago. We also chose to change primary building to frontage building, and those are the buildings that we'll be fronting along 28 or along another way. And we just thought it was a little bit more clear for the folks that will actually be interpreting this bylaw in the future. So you'll see that changed throughout, throughout the bylaw.
Can I, I'm just worried that the 125 isn't high enough. What does a, what does a fireman make? And, and, you know, two, two working people could easily be above 125, and I don't know that that was our intent to, to make it just what I would say is moderately, moderate income own. I don't know. I'm just asking where that 125 came.
Sure. And so at our, the next meeting, we plan to discuss this again on April 22, and at that meeting, we've asked Housing and Sustainability Director Gloria McPherson to be in attendance, and we can ask that question specifically and have some information back to you about the, about what the rents would be approximately for 125% of the area median income. Okay, so then we added a definition for mixed use development, which is a building or buildings in which there are a mix of permitted use, commercial and dwelling, commercial uses and dwelling units. Qualified household is an individual family or set of unrelated individuals who jointly rent a year-round rental unit on a lease of at least 12 months and who occupy the unit as their principal residence, or who own and occupy a year-round ownership unit as their principal residence. At least one household member must occupy the household for at least 10 months annually to be, to be a qualified household. And I think that there were some concerns where, you know, we may have some folks that may, you know, winter in Florida or something along those lines. We wanted to allow for, allow for that. And so again, the 10 months is something that was, is suggested, but if the Planning Board wants to look at a different length of time, we can certainly do that. See, year-round ownership units?
One thing I just noticed, the definition of secondary buildings, you want to change those buildings other than the frontage building?
Right, thank you.
Just popped into my eye.
Good catch.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so then on to the next new definition, which is year-round ownership units. Housing units that are owner-occupied and qualify as the owner's principal residence, as defined in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 830 CMR 62.3.1, in which are occupied by qualified households. A year-round ownership unit may not be used as a short-term rental, subject to rooms excise tax, as defined in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 830 CMR 64G-1-1. And then also year-round rental units are housing units that are rented by the property owner to a tenant using a lease or contract for a term of not less than 12 months, in which are occupied by qualified households. A year-round rental unit may not be used as a short-term rental, subject to the rooms excise tax, as defined in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations 830 CMR 64G-, I'm sorry, .1.1. And under Section 8, density, this is where a majority of the new language comes in. So we thought it was important to note that it's base density in all zones within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And so the first change is residential developments may exceed the base density by providing at least 25% of new dwelling units as attainable units, and an additional 25% of dwelling units that are not income restricted for year-round occupancy in accordance with the incentive section below.
Katie, I'm sorry, that is really not clear.
Let me just reread it, just to, residential del-
I'm sorry, could you explain that? I'm sorry, I didn't really understand it, either the first or the 10th time I read it. It's really the second part of that, where it's talking about an additional 25% of dwelling units, so that's a, the bonus.
I think an example might help clear it for me, too. I was, I was in the same territory that Warren was.
Right. So the way, and again, we'll have other folks here, just to make sure that we're all on the same page on the 22nd. But when I read, the way, the way I'm reading this and the way I recall, is that they're, that those additional 25% are not income restricted, but will require the year-round occupancy. So they're not necessarily restricted to that 125%. That's the way, that's the way I'm interpreting that and the conversation that I recall having. And as we go down, I think that they talk about the number, like the distribution of affordability.
May I just, so does that mean that 50% do not need to be year-round?
No, they need to be, anything that, we'll get to this later in the, in the bylaw, but anything that's taking advi, any units that are taking advantage of the density bonus will need to be year-round.
100% of the development. So why is, but 25 plus 25 equals 50?
I think it's 25 as attainable, an additional 20, yeah. I'm sorry. Let me go back and read that and try to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Come back to that one, because-
Yeah, that's my question. What would the other 50%?
That's, that's fine. As we, as we get further down in the bylaw, it may.
Okay.
Could we just say what you said before, that any, anybody taking use of the density has to 100% year-round? That's really very clear.
Yes, and I think that becomes clear-
I know, but that was very clear.
Right. And I think that that was added earlier on before some of the additional items were added, so let's go back.
Okay. Okay, so we need to look at this sentence again.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay.
All right, so the next, under the distribution of affordability, it shall be as follows. The first unit shall be affordable to households earning 80% to 90% of the area median income. Where are we? Under distribution of affordability.
Okay, yes, sorry. Go ahead.
And then second unit shall be affordable to households earning 90% to 100% AMI, and then additional units may be affordable to households earning between 80% and 125%. If the 20, and then the next bullet that's been added, if the 25% requirement for year-round occupancy units results in a fractional unit, the number shall be rounded up or down to the nearest whole number.
Yes, and-
Should those be reversed?
Well, I even suggested, why don't we choose one or the other, not say up or down, but just, because how do we determine which will it be? So let's just decide that-
Should be rounded accordingly, because if it's 50, it's up, and if it's 49, it's down. That's-
Oh, you could say that.
That's how-
You could say that, sure. Okay.
Because the next whole number is number.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm wondering if the fifth bullet should be before the fourth bullet, because then it, then it does say what fractional unit means.
Where are you?
The, the first new red bullet, if the 25% requirement-
Oh, I see.
I'm just wondering if they should be-
Reversed in order, sure.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay. And the up or down, yes, because it says to the nearest whole number, so that would make it clear that 49 would go down, and what if it's exactly 50?
4.5, exactly, because my, the way I was taught how to round is different than my daughter's, a teacher is now, how you round. So we used to round to the, to the even number. That's how I was always taught.
To the even, so, so what does-
Yeah, if it's 4.5, you round to four. If it's 5.5, you round to six.
I've never heard of that. I have never heard of that. But if it's 4.5, it's exactly half, so do we round it up or down? I was always taught that you go up.
I was taught up.
Yeah.
Always up.
Always up.
That's what I was taught.
I think it's an engineering planning thing.
You're right.
No, it's a math thing.
Well, as long as we define it, I don't care.
Because if you always go up, you're overest, and you're, you're totally, you're overestimated. And if you use the, the process I was taught, then your, your estimation will be closer to, to the actual.
Yeah. Well, I think if we just use standard rounding-
I don't know why you-
Procedures.
It must be a New England thing that you guys were taught that.
4.5 goes to five.
Katie, check the parking, you know, when parking, it says how to round?
Yes.
Up or down? So I would mirror whatever that says.
Yeah, it's okay.
As long as it's-
I knew there was a history, I'm not a doo-wop.
I don't really care how we round, as long as when it comes out .5, that there is an answer as to which way it goes.
It goes up.
Only if we say that.
We've just said it. Do you want it explicit in this sentence, explicitly stated?
I think it ought to be quite clear, otherwise we're going to end up having another town meeting to solve the problem about what happens with sheds.
So I'll see what other language is within the bylaw- So I'll see what other language is within the bylaw that talks about this, and we'll try to mirror that language.
It's a good point. Okay, great. Please go ahead.
So, required year-round ownership or year-round rental units shall be included on the site of the project, shall be integrated with the rest of the development, shall be comparable in quality, access, access to, and use of amenities and location within the development, and shall be constructed at the same rate and timeframe as unrestricted units in the project.
I brought up something this afternoon, maybe the word comparable isn't clear enough, that we should say equal in quality, or the same in quality. Access and use of amenities comparable allows some leeway, and we just should decide if we want to allow that leeway, or do we want it to be equal to or the same?
I know, DHCD, which is now, whatever.
E, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
Right. They actually use a word, and I can't remember what it is, that says that, you know, they should be indistinguishable.
Yes.
And, but it's a, it's a standard word that, phrase that they use, and maybe want, we want to use that same phrase.
Okay. All right. Great.
Yes. Okay, we'll look into that. No occupancy permit for any units subject to the density bonus will be issued until the deed restrictions specifying income restrictions and year-round occupancy restrictions in form and substance acceptable to the planning board or its designee has been recorded at the registry of deeds.
And, and/or land court?
That's a good idea. Yeah, I would think that, okay. Okay. The next bullet is provision shall be made for adequate legal monitoring of all deed restrictive unit, deed restricted units, including an identified nonprofit housing or government monitoring agency approved by the planning board or its designee. Successor monitoring agencies shall be approved by the planning board or its designee. Monitoring agreement shall be in form and substance acceptable to the planning board or its designee.
And we're going to capitalize "planning board" in all.
Yes.
Yes. I just wanted Charlene to know.
Okay, so the next, on the next page, I think that the only changes are from primary to frontage building. And then, the rest of the changes are actually at the end of the bylaw, and they are actually in the use table. And so, instead of having the single mixed-use development, we've broken it down to three categories, so that, so that permitted as of right is a mixed-use development with one to four residential units not utilizing the density bonus. So that's, again, but permitted as of right. Mixed-use development with five or more residential units not utilizing the density bonus would be special condition. And then the mixed-use development utilizing the density bonus would require the special permit, so that the planning board would have the ability to then require the year-round restrictions on those specific properties, taking advantage of the density bonus.
Could, could we just review, what is going to be the difference in what this board does, or how we apply any conditions to it, with a special, best special condition versus a special permit?
So typically, the special condition within our bylaw is pretty much, they're, they're almost laid out, that they need to meet certain criteria. Basically, I think it will come down to being our site plan review criteria. And so, we can bring those forth at the next meeting as well. But the special condition is not necessarily, it's, it's a site plan review kind of plus, like there's certain requirements that will need to be, that will need to be met. And so, we don't see a lot of those, but, you know, usually if it's site plan review, it's all of the same requirements that a special condition would.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to understand and make clear, I mean, if there's certain, if there's certain leverages or abilities to work through specific issues, and it gives you that flexibility, I'm, I'm all for it. One of my big things is always, is waiver, but when you put a waiver out there, what do we get in return?
Right.
And if you're giving me nothing in return, put it in. That's the way I like to approach it, and I was looking to see if there's opportunities with special, special conditions versus special permit.
And I would, and I would say also that, I mean, don't forget, like, these may be permitted as of right, but they'll still need site plan approval.
Okay.
Right? So that's, so it's not that they'll just come in and get a building permit, they'll still require approval by the planning board for.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just that the, these uses, you know, the Ps are permitted as of right, they don't need any, they don't need to meet, go for a special permit. And then, the same breakdown on the next page, we looked at the same breakdown, just specifically under residential, so where it's not mixed-use, where they're just strictly multifamily dwellings, we required the same requirements, you know, for the density bonus, so one to four. Again, it's permitted as of right in Zone A2 and B, but if you'll notice, it's not permitted in A1, and that's because we didn't, we wanted mixed-use buildings as the front, as the prime, as the frontage buildings, if you recall. And so that's why those are not allowed in A1. So this, and it follows the same multifamily dwellings with five or more residential units not utilizing the density bonus, again, special condition in A2, Zone A2 and Zone B, but not allowed in A1. And then, multifamily dwelling units utilizing the density bonus, again, not allowed in A1, but special permits in A2 and Zone B. And so.
Katie, just a formatting thing. On page 15 of this, that's the first part of the use table, but it has the footnote one at the bottom of that. It might be clearer to most, including me, if the footnote was at the end of the entire table. So moving that footnote to the, to the end after, after the residential section.
Just that specific one, or all footnotes?
Well, yeah, really all footnote.
I think so, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, but one is, well, I'm not sure, I took it as 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, all the way down, but all of the footnotes ought to be at the end of the table.
I agree.
Yeah.
Good point, thank you.
Great.
Maybe I'm just missing it. Where are, where actually are footnotes one through four in the text, in the table? Am I missing it?
It's a footnote just to use.
Yeah, but it's usually a footnote to something. I mean, it's got, you know, use one, there's footnote number one.
Point, point one.
All, all four, there's only one footnote.
It's all four items.
All four items are footnote number one.
It's tiny, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and footnote number one is just a footnote to the entire use table.
Gotcha. All right.
I think that's how it works. And Lauren is absolutely correct. It's better if all those footnotes were placed at the end of the entire table. So, we don't necessarily need to discuss this tonight, but I just had a general question. I've just gone through and I've circled again everything, not, not just the red additions, but everything in the use table that's either special condition or special permit, and I would just like to review together, maybe when Cape Cod Commission is here on, at our next meeting, in any of these cases, do we need to specify anything further regarding what the special conditions are, or what the special permit criteria are for any of those, including formula business establishment, lunchroom, all those situations? I'd just like to be clear, make sure that we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to do that, but I somehow either am totally misreading this draft, or I have something which is a major issue for me. And it has to do with, if you focus on what a qualified household is in that definition, and I put myself in the position of saying, gee, most of the things that are required here, if you're a qualified household, may not be what I want to do, and if I'm a developer, maybe I should just be, I should not be a qualified household. In other words, I'm not going to rent or own and live in it year-round, so I'm not a qualified household. And if I'm not a qualified household, the only requirement for attainable housing is the 20% of the units I build, which is one out of five. And there's no ability at all to restrict short-term rentals, because those are only part of the restrictions that are applicable in granting a special permit. So if it's built by right in the use table, of which there are many things that are, and you're not a qualified household, you, you know, we are doing exactly what we have tried not to do, and that is create a situation where the vast majority of the households or the units built will be built by Florida residents who want an investment, and it'll be rented out short-term. It's by right, there's no special permit, therefore no special permit requirements, and even though this, the requirements of if you have a special permit are exactly what we're trying to achieve, if you choose not to be a qualified household, you basically can build 20% of the units you proposed to build, and only 20% of them will be affordable, attainable, and anything that's not deed-restricted will be short-term available for short-term rental. I mean, that's the way I read it. And it seemed to me the only way to avoid that, given the drafting, would be to require a special permit of any, any residents, any housing units that are in the entire district. And that's probably not the best way to do it, but, and as I went back and read Town Council's comments about, could we restrict short-term rentals, and the answer was yes, all of his comments were focused around, yes, you can do it via the special permit granting conditions, as I say, but there, if you're not a qualified householder, there aren't any special permit conditions for many of the housing units that are in the use table. So I have a major issue with whether we're doing exactly what we started out not to do.
So, I mean, I think we could go over this more deeply when Cape Cod Commission is here, and Gloria, but, so the permitted uses, I mean, the residential permitted uses are mixed-use development with one to four residential uses not utilizing the density bonus, and we're permitting those by right, and so what we would be agreeing to is the 20%, which would be a fractional unit, which would require a payment in lieu. So, all the other residential situations require special permit or special condition, so I would understand those do invoke.
Well, the special condition is not the special permit.
Okay, so we.
Right. Yeah, Katie, you have a comment? And the board could, could, you know, we could have that conversation about whether or not the special condition requirements could be, you know, also just be special permit, as opposed to just.
Yeah.
It's really, you know, just a question of whether a non-qualified household, as per this definition, what are the ground rules of what they can be restricted to, or required to do?
I think what we're saying is that it has to be a qualified household.
It doesn't say that at all. It just says what a qualified householder is. If you are a 12-month-a-year rental, renter, or if you own a house and live in it for 12 months a year, you're a qualified household.
So, in the definitions of year-round, for year-round ownership units, year-round rental units, it talks about qualified households in both of those, and?
Yeah, in my re-review of all this, it all, it all goes back to the definition of qualified household.
Okay, let, let us take your question back and just, you know, further review it.
And by definition, if you, you know, live in Naples 182 days of the year, you are not a qualified household. So you can buy a unit at market value and rent it out short-term as much as you want, because there are no restrictions. You can do that by right. No special permit required.
And what use? In, right now, by right, we have mixed-use development with one to four residential units. Can be built by right.
So you can buy one of those, if you live in Naples 182 days of the year, and rent it out short-term by the week. No special permit required, therefore no conditions of a special permit.
So we're asking the question, that, in that case, do we want to restrict that to year-round occupancy as well?
Well.
What's permitted by right?
I'm just focusing on either I'm misreading this completely, or I don't know what the right way to draft it is to achieve it, but if you can live in Naples six months plus a day and buy a unit in West Chatham Neighborhood and rent it out short-term without any ability of this board to restrict it, then we have not achieved what I thought we're trying to achieve here. And that's the way I read it, so.
Okay, so let's review that. Let's review that when we have everyone here on the 22nd.
Sure.
And then I think the board does need to consider whether, I had always understood that to some extent, there would be, we would be allowing some market-rate units, and that it wasn't really possible for us to restrict all residential units to be, you know, year-round occupancy and attainable and affordable, but that we wanted to restrict them to a good degree. But I think we had, at least it was my understanding, we had always understood that there would be some allowance for market-rate units, and so, it looks to me now, but again, we'll want to review this with everyone, that mixed-use development with one to four residential units not utilizing the density bonus are permitted by right, and yes, in that case, it would seem to me that someone could buy one at market rate and live in Florida and rent it out. But we anticipated that there would be some of that. If we want to eliminate that, we could pursue that, if we want, does that make sense? Am I, or am I misinterpreting it as well?
It does, and also that, you know, if you look under Section 7, which we didn't make any changes to, so we didn't go through it today, but the mandatory provision of affordable and attainable housing for development of new residential units is, any new or rehabilitated development involving two or more dwelling units shall provide 20% of the units as deed-restricted affordable and/or attainable. The applicant shall meet the requirements by either constructing the deed-restricted, deed-restricting in perpetuity a dwelling unit or payment in lieu. And so, that's, that will cover those one to four. Again, there would be some market rate, but there, there would be some advantages, because if there's two or more units, you're getting either a unit or a payment in lieu of that unit. So, again, I think that that was part of.
We just, yeah, we discussed it, but I think it's fine, we should reconsider it, and see if we want to leave it like that, I guess, is the point that you're bringing up.
It doesn't actually say. I think we're in violent agreement as to what our objective is.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, as I read this draft, it virtually requires or permits the exact opposite. The vast majority would be market-rate units that could be rented out short-term.
If people, if the developer or the property owner does not utilize the density bonus and builds one to four units, that would be the case.
But it, it's not even clear to me that the houses that aren't in the affordable, attainable component of that density would also have to be year-round.
No, there's no way for us to require that.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think that that's, that's, you know, part of what Catherine was saying is, I mean, to get, I don't know that it was ever the intent of this West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw that all units created would be affordable and attainable.
No, 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 no. But it, it was that we, we weren't going to let people build summer, summer rental
But it was that we weren't going to let people build summer rentals by including one attainable unit and then having four summer rentals. And that, and it seems like I have to agree that that's what we've got here. And it's not even clear to me, when, if we look at that in seven, it doesn't, it says unit, 20% of the dwelling units as deed-restricted affordable or attainable housing units, it doesn't even say qualified, and that, shouldn't it say qualified?
Under the qualified, had the qualified households in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, the use table does not limit the, or the issue, it doesn't matter how many units are built. And what, the only differential in there is we have a special condition for if it's more than, if it's five or more, and only it's permitted by right if it's one to four.
Right.
But the issue is still the same with respect to, you can build as many as you want, some of them will have to be attainable, 20% of them. So if you build 10, you're going to have 20%, you're going to have two affordable, attainable housing units, and the rest can all be market value, rented out short-term.
No, that's not, that's not what it says. I think if they use the density bonus, they have to build a higher percentage, and that's outlined in Section 8 under density.
Well, the bonus is based on per acre, right? Density.
Yeah.
But if you've got a two-acre lot, then you can, you know, it's 20% of the units.
It's 25%.
It goes up to 20.
I'm sorry. But the point is, the density is a per-acre thing as opposed to the development, which is, if you've got a five-acre, there isn't one, but you did, then you could build a whole lot of market-rate units and you'd have 25% of them are affordable, attainable, and the rest of them, you can sell at market rate to people who want to rent them out every week. In other words, most of the units, 75% of them, are going to be exactly what we don't want to have in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Right.
Well, Katie, are we still going ahead with having someone provide us a build-out analysis?
Yes, actually, that's my next update.
Okay. Well, I did, I did some of my own calculations on this, and that's going to be the reality no matter what. And if you see the build-out analysis, you'll see that, for example, the smaller lots, you almost can't achieve anything other than the one to four unit, that range. There's limited larger lots unless somebody buys up multiple properties and combines them together, which is still a possibility. But when you see a build-out analysis and you run through the numbers on this, no matter what, you're going to have a predominant number of units that are not going to be in the attainable area. It's just the nature of it. The best you have is 25%.
No, I get that. I'd like more attainable, affordable.
But you're not going to get any more than 25%.
I can live with whatever we can sell or permitted to do.
I think there's certain...
What I'm rarely hung up on is, I don't want to create a lot of new housing units that can be rented out short-term by investors and nobody lives there.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying, but...
And we have a draft which says that 75% of the units...
Get some legal counsel to say that you can do that, all right? I don't think you can.
Well, if we have a special, a special permit required for any new housing unit in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center...
So you're saying for every single residential would have a special permit?
I'm just saying, special counsel has justified, special permits are permitted to restrict short-term rentals. I'll say it that way, short version, not the lawyer, but...
Well, the only, the only way you achieve that is you've got to have a special permit for anything that's residential.
And the justification for doing it to any housing unit, he gave us the wording for, which is now but incorporated into the preamble, is for the best interest of the town. That's my short version of it. And it's in accordance with what the town has, has a plan to do. So you could, a way to achieve what I thought we were trying to achieve is to require a special permit for developments in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Any residential development. Let me just, I think this might clarify the sentence in Section 8 that we were not clear about, perhaps. I'll propose that residential developments may exceed the base density by providing at least 25% of new dwelling units as attainable units and an additional 25% of dwelling units that are not income-restricted for year-round occupancy in accordance with the incentive section below. So the way I'm reading that now is that 50%, so say you're going to do a 12-unit development, 50% have to be year-round, 25% have to be attainable, income-restricted. So, so that does provide a higher percentage of restriction for year-round occupancy when the density bonus is utilized. I recall a few meetings when Gloria was here, and she discussed with us that there's certain ratios where a housing development is no longer financially viable in general for developers, and that is the reason that probably we are not requiring 100% attainable housing because some market-rate units need to be built. So I would just suggest that we review that when Cape Cod Commission and Gloria are here. But I understand that's, that we have to sort of not cross a certain line, otherwise we create a situation where the development of any particular property may not be financially viable for a developer, so...
Madam Chairman, that, that's all focusing on how many affordable, attainable units can you get? I'm all for increasing the number, and I think, based on everything I've heard up until this point and in the past, the analysis has it about right in terms of, and the incentive bonuses as well with respect to affordable, attainable. Now, my hang-up is that if you are not a qualified household, anything that you build which is not required to be attainable, affordable, has no restrictions at all, nor does this board have an ability to restrict it to no short-term rentals.
Well, there's this 25% addition...
You have to be an attainable, yeah, but everything that restricts it and eliminates short-term rentals ties back into being an affordable household. And if you choose not to be a qualified household, not affordable, a qualified householder, in other words, you live in Naples, Florida for six months plus a day, then there's no restriction possible based on this draft. And you will end up having the majority of the units built being perfectly available to be rented out by the day, week, month. Because there are very few, you know, people can choose to not be a qualified household, which requires that you be there 12 months of the year or rent it out 12 months of the year. So my, that's my problem, is that we don't have a way to ensure that anybody will live as a permanent residence in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, other than the very few attainable, affordable, deed-restricted units, as they say. And I'd like it to be slightly more units than that, but that's not my issue. My problem is, we're doing exactly what we started out to absolutely avoid, and that is create a, and not only an ability, but almost an incentive to not be a qualified householder because you can do much more and you'll make more money if you're a developer selling to people who are not qualified householders. Why? There's no restriction on selling them to a corporation that can take everyone you build and then...
You're going over and over this again. I mean, I... Well, I think, I think it's appropriate for us to actually discuss this next time when we get a little bit more advice.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that that is going to be a viable solution. And what I mean by that, if you can't build it and you can't make it work economically, you're achieving zero. So I think you have to bring, you know, the, that part of the equation. Gloria introduced us to that when we first started this discussion. So if you're trying to achieve what you're just describing there, I don't think that's going to happen. And I think that you have to put that into the equation of the discussion that we have.
Absolutely, but I'm not at all arguing that we ought to increase the number of affordable, attainable houses that are permitted, units, not at all.
I didn't say anything about that. I'm talking about if you can't make a port of some money associated with building the regular units...
Yeah.
All right? The rest of it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but they'll be at market rates, selling prices.
That's right.
That's right.
And that's what we've been talking about since day one.
We've been talking about that since day one.
And accept, and we've had to accept that as a reality of the world.
Yes. I'm not restricting the selling price of any unit that's from anybody that's going to live there.
Yeah.
I just don't want it to be bought by someone who does not live there with the intent of investing, selling...
I'm not sure you're going to get that, though. We heard you saying that, yeah.
Well, we've done it with respect to all of those units that are owned by qualified households. It's in the, it's in the draft. You can't...
We don't know what this, yes, please.
The, the thing that we should look at is whether that 50% requirement for year-round could be applied in general. We're asking, we're allowing for a higher density than was allowed there before.
Yep.
So by, by making it, them allowed to have more than one unit on the property, we should at least have the provision that 50% of the units have that year-round restriction on them. Regardless of whether it's affordable, attainable, or market rate, because just by the nature of allowing for higher density period in this district, we, we should have some restriction that, that at least half of them have a year-round deed restriction on them. Now, whether we have to do that through special permit every time, that's, then we do because that, I have to agree here that that's what we really are looking for. We're not looking for giving people the opportunity to put more units on properties than they had before, and they're all rentals. That, that was never our intention.
I don't, I, I don't know if that works, but that's what I would suggest we look at.
Sure. I'll certainly bring that back for further discussion with staff in the Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah. I think it's a question of can we do it? I think, I, even though all board members haven't spoken, I'm going to assume that in general, we're in agreement that we would much rather have, if it were up to us, we'd want 100% year-round occupancy and 75% attainable. I mean, we'd want something like that. The question is, can we do it legally? And also can, is it practical that it will give enough incentive to a developer to create that development? And Gloria did review with us some standard ratios, and there's a certain tipping point where it doesn't work anymore financially, economically. So I think we should just review that and just see, ask the question, can we maximize this? Can we, or are we maximizing it? Are we doing the maximum that we can legally and economically to maximize the number of attainable units and maximize the number of year-round occupancy units in all cases?
Madam Chairman, I may sound like I'm arguing against myself, but I do not feel that we have an ability, based on prior legal advice, that we can tell a homeowner that they have to live in that house 12 months a year. People want to go to Florida for six months and two days, so they're a Florida resident. So they're not going to be a resident.
You're never going to achieve what you're trying to do.
I am going to achieve what I'm going to try to do. You can own the property and have it empty for six months of the year, if that's what you choose to do. But what you can't do is sell that six months to a company that's going to rent it out by the day, week, or month.
I don't know if we can, I mean, we'll just explore the question. I don't know if we can restrict that. But I think let's ask the question maybe as, what can we do to make it maximum, maximum year-round occupancy and maximum attainable, but still make it a viable?
Yeah.
You know?
As drafted, anything that requires a special permit in the use table, as drafted, anything that requires a special permit allows this board to restrict short-term rentals, eliminate them. It's just if it's, if you can do something in the use table as a permitted right, and you choose not to be a qualified home, household, then those restrictions and that ability of the board in this draft disappears. So maybe there's a way to expand the applicability of our ability to restrict short-term rentals beyond what's in the draft. Wherever it says a special permit is required, we have that flexibility to expand it further such that it covers many, if not all, of the housing units that can be built by right. And that's irregardless, or that is regardless, I guess, of the attainable, affordable provisions, which I think are fine. I'd like it to be more attainable, retain, units, but it is what it is, and it's not going to be a whole lot more than what we have here no matter what, so...
Yeah, I think that's, we've come to that conclusion.
I'm not focused on that at all, only on trying to expand the ability to restrict the short-term rentals. Because I can see the future, and it's, it's not pretty if we don't.
Okay. So I, I also mentioned that we just, we'd like to go through the use table and look at everything, that special permit and special condition, and just evaluate each case and make sure that we're satisfied with how we've structured the use table. And in that regard, we can also consider the one residential use, that is one to four residential units, that is permitted by right. Yeah. And just consider that more carefully, yeah. Frank?
Madam Chairman, I, I think I'm sensing we're going to go back to Town Council, yeah, clarification as to our ability to restrict housing to full-time ownership. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily through the chair. I think what we're looking, I think from what I'm understanding is that we are looking to see whether or not we can restrict the units, the one to four, the units one to four that are permitted as of right, to not allow them to be utilized as short-term rentals. I think that that's ultimately Mr. Chan's call.
I would suggest it should be broader than that, and we should have an understanding of our power, our authority to restrict units so that they aren't short-term rental units all the time.
I think that was the question that was asked of Town Council some months ago in response to our concern about the unintended consequences of the additional density that was provided in the bylaw. And I think the wording that's been inserted is the result of Town Council's response, then taking that response to Cape Cod Commission, asking them to draft the language, and then Town Council's review of that language, so...
If Warren is correct, but I'm not saying he's not correct, but if he's correct, the only way we can accomplish this is through a special permit. I don't understand it, frankly. I mean, I'm blunt. I just, I just don't understand it. And I'm wondering whether there might be an opportunity for me to talk to Town Council about that with, with staff?
As I say, I think we've already forwarded the questions to Town Council, but Katie, please go ahead.
We have, and I could put a request for Town Council to attend a meeting, but we haven't typically had board members specifically speaking to Town Council. But I'm, we can certainly make that request.
Well, my thought is that this is so important...
Typically what we've had is Town Council attend a meeting.
...of the town, that we fully understand what our authority is, that it might be worthwhile having Town Council in if that's the method that we can explore it. But the other way, I could, I'd be happy to join in a meeting with you. That's the other way to pursue it.
Well, let me just say this. I think this issue was in the, was our question for many months, and the response that our principal planner was advising us is that at this time, there was no, and the initial response from Town Council was, there was no way to regulate it. And back in October, when we first were reviewing what the open issues were again on this bylaw, I was advised that we needed to submit these questions to Town Council. But at that time, we were anticipating that a possible answer, very possible answer we would have gotten from Town Council is, sorry, there is no legal mechanism to do this at all. And I was looking at a situation where I would have had to come back to the board and say, okay... okay, we have no legal mech, mechanism at all of addressing this. Do you want to go forward because it's that big of an issue? Fortunately, we did not get that answer. Fortunately, we got an answer from town council that gave us some legal avenues to address that issue. That was forwarded to Cape Cod Commission, who then drafted this language. So I think we've vetted that issue with town council, and this is what we've come up with. If we again want to ask Cape Cod Commission, along with town council, can we make, make this more? I think that's essentially what we're asking. We can ask that question.
Maybe utilizing the special permit mechanism somehow.
Yeah. Um, yes.
Well, first of all, I, I think that the, the solution to the, to the, um, short-term rental is a different tax, taxing for, for those properties that, you know, classify them differently, and they get, they get taxed differently. That, that can, that could have a, a significant effect. But if we are going forward with this, remember, we said we wanted one to four units as, as by right. Well, let's change it to one to two units per property by right. And, a, and for, up to, you can get four market rate, but that's only by special permit, of which two would then have to be year round, deeded year round. That, it's, we, we came up with the one to four. That isn't, that isn't, um, law. That's stuff we came up with. So let's change it to one to two. And above two, uh, to four is special permits, deed restricting for the third and the fourth property, that they have to have a year-round deed on them.
Okay. I mean, I think those are options. Again, I think we just need to review this with Cape Cod Commission. Yeah.
Yes, we have a meeting later this week scheduled to discuss tonight comments that we heard, heard tonight. The expectation, or my expectation, was that, you know, after further digestion, that the board members may have additional questions that, um, and again, would, will have Cape Cod Commission staff, and myself and Gloria McPherson here at the next meeting on April 22nd to discuss any, you know, any concerns further that the, that the board may have. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we were successful in getting the DLTA grant through the Cape Cod Commission to update the build-out analysis specifically for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So we have not, um, we just heard last week, so we haven't gone through the, we haven't created the scope of work or anything at this point in time. But that, that's a, um, I think it was a $25,000 grant award. So I think we're in pretty good shape to get that done, and we'll be working towards that as well. So we have a lot of work that we're going to continue to do with the commission and continue to move forward. But I, I would just ask that, you know, if, if there are further comments, you know, you're welcome to submit them to me, or we can, you know, have a, a more formal discussion with everybody at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I think we just want to, I just want to reiterate and express on behalf of the board, I think what we're looking to do, as I said, more, if there can be more restriction to create 100% year-round occupancy. I, as I recall, I don't have town council's opinion in front of me that he replied to us. But as I recall, there were some legal obstacles, as we understood it, to having any sort of restriction like that, that it was rather difficult to create that. So I don't know if it's possible to create 100% year-round occupancy. But it's a question that's worth exploring, I suppose. Yeah. Okay. And then, so we'll look at all of these in greater detail on April 22nd. I think that's the best we can do. We, we did just want to do a kind of initial review tonight. Yeah, Frank?
So Katie, um, I have additional comments, and I've got a slew of comments. Every time I picked this up over the weekend, I had a new comment. I should just send it to you?
It'd be better, actually, I think, to bring it out in open meeting, if I may say so. So.
I'll be happy to.
Please go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a restriction on building height in all zones to two stories?
In this bylaw? Yes.
But if you, if there's an affordable element to it, it could be two and a half stories?
That's as I understand it.
Why is it restricted to two stories through the entire area? It seems to be draconian. That's why I was.
It's based on our current bylaw.
Right. But this is the new bylaw, right?
Well, this is only for West Chatham. Right.
There's a 30-foot height restriction town-wide.
No, that, that stays. I'm, I'm just curious as to why it's limited to two stories. That's all.
I think it was considered, if I could just, to my memory, it was considered by the board and the public as part of our consideration of form-based code. And I think the integration of the board's opinion as well as public response, this was when the form-based code was integrated into this bylaw, which was a lot of work done a couple of years ago now. I think it was considered to be more favorable to keep it two stories rather than two and a half.
So, yeah, two stories includes, does not include the roof, so it's two stories up plus a normal roof, right? That's still two stories. Right? Okay, good. What was the thinking behind the maximum building footprint per zone? That, that was one thing that I didn't understand.
Again, I think, you know, a lot of review with the board and the public in terms of wanting to create in general smaller buildings rather than huge buildings. So I think that was the.
Five thousand, four thousand, three thousand by zone, and I just wondered why the differentials. But that's, I was just curious. We don't, we can move on.
No, that's okay. Um, I just think these were considered in, in the process of considering form-based code, looking at the lots, looking at what the potential uses were in each zone, and how that would work out, and that certain buildings are more appropriate along Route 28, and certain uses are more appropriate along Route 28, and then the, the lots directly behind, and then the lots behind those, that there would be a differentiation of uses and building forms.
Okay. I don't want to revet the wheel. It's obviously been four years. I'm, I'm just getting into it.
That's okay.
Outdoor lighting. There is, there are provisions on outdoor lighting in business areas, but I can't find any in residential areas. This is a mixed-use zone. So we'll have some residents and some businesses or commercial. But since we're, it's not a business anymore unit, there would be no restrictions on lighting. And the town that I came from in Woodbury, we had restrictions, for example, on lumens, you know, how bright a light can be, how warm it can be. So, you know, you don't, you want incandescent-type lights. You don't want, you know, objectionable fluorescent lights.
We do not want incandescent lights.
So I would suggest that we consider having a section on lighting.
What I'll comment on is, I think some of these issues are also considered in our site plan review process. And it's understood that, uh, in the case of multifamily developments as well as mixed-use developments, any new development will go through site plan review, and lighting is re, is included in our site plan review. So I think for that reason, it was felt not to be, uh, not necessary to include it in zoning because it's included in site plan review.
Okay.
Okay.
If it's, if it's covered in another way.
Yeah. I think that's, that was the issue on that.
Required parking. Hotels and lodging in the new allows 1.25 spaces per room. No, that's the old rule, one, 1.25, but this increases it to 1.5 in West Chatham. It appears to anyway.
For motels?
Yeah, and I may be reading it wrong, but I, it seemed to be increasing the number of parking rather than keeping it the same or reducing. So I just note that if, something to look at.
Okay.
We are materially reducing parking in the area, which is great. And we have provisions as to, to people coming forward and saying, well, we want to share parking. But one thing we might want to look at, maybe townwide, not even, because we have this issue of parking in a lot of places, is not, not to, not to allow people to take their parking slots and say, this is only for the, these 10 slots are only for the lawyer that works in this building. And, and the lawyer doesn't ever fill them up or goes on vacation or whatever. So since parking in a sense is fungible, you know, they're all kind of the same. And we're also putting the parking in the back, you know, so it's, it's easy to connect them. Should we say that no parking places shall be reserved except as permitted by planning? If somebody shows that that's necessary, if somebody says, we need to reserve them, we're a hospital, we're, whatever. But other than, than that, you can't reserve. It's, it's just a thought.
Again, I'll just say, I think what the rationale of the board in considering is parking is something that's thoroughly reviewed in our site plan review. And again, so because it's reviewed in site plan review, I think it was felt, a detail like that does not need to be considered in zoning.
Okay.
That's, was the feeling of the board.
Definition of zones.
Yes.
If I may just add that the board, at the time of site plan review, would have the opportunity to make that a condition of a site plan application.
Yes. Exactly. To either be able to restrict.
My ignorance here, I'm so new.
No, it's good to go through it, and better to go through it in open meeting rather than emails.
Definition of zones, i- if a lot in Zone A gets divided so that the area away from Route 28 doesn't have any frontage on 28, does that area now become Zone B or Zone?
I think I might have to get Katie's input on that one.
Zones are defined as, if, if you have a lot that has frontage on 28 that goes back, the front of the lot, the 100 feet is 1A. And.
The rear is A2.
Right, right.
The entire rear is A2.
Right. But if that lot gets divided, does the back now become Zone B?
No.
The, the 100-foot strip of Zone A1 maintains regardless of what the frontage is along Route 28. So if one of the larger lots gets subdivided by way of an approval not required plan, you know, gets sliced in half, um, it would still be 100 feet from the right-of-way of Route 28 into the property, and then beyond that, it would be A2.
Even though that lot in the back no longer has any frontage on 28?
You, it ha, there has to be some kind of frontage. You can't create a landlocked parcel. So any lot has to contain frontage.
Got it.
That answer?
That does.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Sidewalks. I think this is, I could go on, but I'll stop with sidewalk.
No, go ahead.
I mean, one of the objectives in the front is to create pedestrian-friendly. But we don't have a lot of provisions in here on sidewalks. We don't really talk about it very, very much. So I think there should be some thought as to sidewalks throughout the district and how we can incentivize that or require it. I know, for example, that we have some sidewalks there now. I'm aware of that. But I did go around the district on Sunday and looked around, and some people have planted hedges right up to the edge of the, uh, road so that you, a pedestrian has to walk on the road. You can't, there's nowhere else to go. So should we think about incorporating sidewalk requirements or incentives going forward? Because this is the, presumably, the, um, start of something that's going to be expanded to other neighborhood districts, right? Hopefully.
We can use this as a template, but I think the comprehensive plan does want us to evaluate each neighborhood center
Of course.
according to its own needs. But I think we do, we are looking at a situation where this could be a template for the other neighborhood centers as well. But they're going to be, each one will be a little different. I'm going to let Katie respond to this. I think sidewalks are usually not private property owner's responsibility. They usually go to the municipality, but I'll ask Katie to comment.
Right. So again, along Route 28, I believe that there are sidewalks, you know, within, all within the district. If we're looking at the properties, you know, perhaps A1 and two, the zones A1 and two, again, those will all be looked at through the site plan approval. And we do require, or one of the criteria is to look at vehicle and pedestrian access. So I think that those are something that, you know, the planning board could bring up on a case-by-case basis if, if needed.
We, we have, in, in past cases, asked for a sidewalk that went from 28 to our rear apartment, uh, complex. I think, what was it, 785 Main Street? I can't remember the exact, exact address.
Yes.
And, and it was for that exact reason. It was, there wasn't going to be a safe way to access the rear of the property. So, and that was all on the site. So I, I, I think it's a site-by-site base, uh, case, and I, and it's really important to flush these things out during the site plan review and insist upon them.
Yeah, in, uh, Woodbury, again, where I come from, when we had subdivisions, we required sidewalks. And so it's something, it's terribly important. I don't think it's a minor matter. So we might want to think about writing something up.
I think, again, as Arthur mentioned, we do consider this in site plan review. And I'm, popping into my mind right now are a couple of site plan that we've done where we have actually required a pedestrian walkway at a certain point in the site for safety reasons.
Right, I'm talking about along the road, access for everybody. That's, that's the sidewalk.
Along Route 28. That I think.
Or along.
That's a state highway, and I think we might need to consider that differently.
Madam Chairman, I'm talking as a general matter, along any road as a template.
For the whole, we want to work it into the zoning.
Sidewalks. That's, that's really where I'm coming from.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And I'll stop there.
No, that's okay. That's okay. You can, you can continue with your points, but, um, I'm not sure if the question you're asking now is something that should be incorporated into the zoning, or it's something that's about what the municipality will provide.
So we do look through our subdivision regs. I think that that would be the location where we would require sidewalks if there was a new subdivision going in. That's, that's an appropriate place for that to happen. But it's not necessarily something that we can require through zoning on private property. Because if a sidewalk is to be maintained, you know, again, not that somebody couldn't put in a sidewalk, but I don't know that we could require a sidewalk along a roadway to be installed as part of a site plan review on private property.
All I can say is that we did precisely that in, in Connecticut, but I, I frankly don't know the answer in Massachusetts.
Connecticut's planning laws are so far advanced than Massachusetts. Just so you know, we plan by zoning and you zone by planning in Connecticut. They're very different, unfortunately.
But I think it is something we can address in site plan review. So if a property comes before us and there is an issue about pedestrian, um, access, we can require that a sidewalk be included in the site plan, and we've done that. So that may be a good way to address the issue. I don't know, and Katie's saying that we can't require it by zoning on private property. Is that?
Right. I don't believe that we can. I think it's, you're looking at a right-of-way, which would typically include a sidewalk. Not, a sidewalk is not typically on private property, if you will.
So we can address it. Okay. And please, do you have more points? Please go ahead. Oh, yes, absolutely, because I think it's just good to, um, we have to do what needs to be done.
Facade transparency. When I saw that heading, I was very excited because what I was mostly concerned about was, you know, a whole wall of sheet, you know, glass. was, you know, a whole wall of sheet, you know, glass.
Glass, yeah.
You know, where, particularly with commercial establishments that are open a lot, all of that light spills out into the outside, and it's not, I don't think it's in accord with what the town would want, just to have a, but those transparency rules don't provide a maximum. I can't find one anyway, they provide a minimum transparency, is that right?
Can you cite the page that you're looking at in the draft by the?
I'll try.
Page four, transparency, the measurement percentage of clear glass within a solid wall along a building facade, but where do we define what we say it has to be?
On page nine.
Eight, eight or nine?
Yeah, it's in towards the back.
There is an energy code that would, would not permit a lot, a lot of window. You just wouldn't be able to build your, your building anymore with, with a full facade of, of glass.
Yeah, I'm, if we could find the page where that's noted.
Page nine.
Page nine. Okay.
It starts on bottom, very bottom of page eight, where it says, building features zone A1.
Yes.
Facade transparency.
Yes. Ground story, 35% minimum for street-facing facades, and upper story, 20%, minimum. So this is just for A1 on Route 28 that, and again, it was in the consideration of form-based code, and I think it's something we considered pretty thoroughly with Cape Cod Commission as well as surveys that went out to the public. And it's mostly that we wanted to present something in the facade that faced Route 28 where there was clear display of the commercial activity available. So that's why the minimums are stated. And you're suggesting there needs to be a maximum stated?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about an entire wall.
Of glass.
Facing the street, right.
Yeah.
Because that happens.
Yes, and there is an exception for historic structures to maintain historic window configuration. So let's put a note that we could add a maximum there.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to mention that, that this, the area in A1 is also within the Historic Business District.
Oh, that's right.
And so, right, and so will all of the, any new structure will be designed in accordance with their requirements.
So that may obviate the need to add a maximum, we could, but thank you for the reminder.
As long as you have a minimum, I, I think it's important to say there's a maximum.
Yeah, okay. We could look at the HBDC design guidelines, which Planning Board has adopted as our design guidelines, it may already be included in that. Okay, great.
And also.
Other points? Go ahead, Charlene.
Under the subdivision control law.
I looked it up.
The board can or may require sidewalks.
Okay.
On new subdivision roads.
Okay.
It's on new subdivision roads.
Yes, okay, great. Good. You have more points, Frank? No. It's actually better to, to go through them, and so. Yes, I think I, I'm interested in, let's do it, because otherwise we'll need to do it on April 22nd, and we'll have a lot of additional points to discuss on April 22nd. And this way too, anything that's still open, we know that we can bring it up on April 22nd and, and vet it at that time, and Katie has the opportunity of speaking with Cape Cod Commission, who also assisted us in developing the form-based code. So I think it's more fruitful to bring it up now.
It's, well, to give you an example of purpose, item C. Enhance the character of the WCNC and promote the adaption of existing buildings to permit development.
Redevelopment.
I would have changed that to say, enhance the character of the WCNC and promote the redevelopment of existing buildings in accordance with Section 3C9. That's the kind of comment I'm going to be making all year.
Section 3C9.
Yeah. Which is this, it's, it's going to be this section.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, I, I mean, basically just saying redevelopment in accord with the.
Promote the redevelopment, instead of saying promote the ad, the adaption of existing buildings, permit redevelopment, I would have said, promote the redevelopment of existing buildings in accordance with this section. That's all.
I'm okay with that change, as long as the rest of the board is, I'm seeing heads nod, so great.
Section three, it says, location and area is the caption.
Section three.
Location and area, it's where the map is?
Yes.
I think it should say, perhaps, location and boundaries?
We don't want to define the boundaries here because that will be defined in a separate article. So we're not specifically defining the boundaries here.
Okay.
It'll be a separate, a separate article that'll be brought before town meeting and voted on and passed, so.
So this map is not the boundaries, doesn't reflect the boundaries?
It does reflect it, but it's, it's not the be-all and end-all, that will be drafted in a separate article.
I think I understand.
Okay.
Both articles will come up, one right after the other, and they're both tied together, but usually the map is dealt with as a separate.
Article, and then the boundaries will be specified.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's how we did South Chatham.
Allowing, this is section four, allowing the staff plan review to make certain decisions, small changes of pre-existing non-conforming uses and structures, which I'm all in favor of.
And where is this? Oh, yes, first paragraph.
Section four.
Last sentence?
Well, it's that whole section that allows this discretion.
Okay.
Which I'm in favor of. I'm not certain that, haven't thought it through, that the definition of what is minor works. So that's something which you might want to think about. But I, in any case, I think that all such decisions of the planning department should be, we should be advised of what they were, so we're.
Oh, that's a matter of course.
So we're up to date.
Yes.
You know, so I would add some language that says that the next meeting would be advised so we know what's happening.
Okay, I think that's a matter of course. I'm not sure if we have to add that language, but we could. If the board chooses to reconsider the 200 square feet, whether that's still allowable, the only reason I'm responding in the manner I have is that most of the points you're bringing up, the board has, like, thoroughly considered.
I know, I know, and I apologize.
So, so I'm just asking the board, do, would you like to reconsider that? And if you would, we can, yeah. Okay, great. Next point.
Building frontage occupancy talks about facades parallel.
Page three.
Page three, sorry. Just turn, just turn.
Okay, got it.
Right. What if a facade is not parallel? Are we requiring that they be parallel?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in the redevelopment.
I just want to be sure about that. Okay. Just a general point, I think this has been made before, and the provisions having to do with affordable and attainable.
Okay.
Whether they really work.
Okay.
Is, is a, is an economic question for developers. And so it might be worthwhile, once we settle on the final, to actually run a pro forma to see whether this is actually workable, whether it will generate what we hope it will generate. Based on the current construction costs and rental costs and things like that. Just a pro forma, you know, nothing terribly complex, but just, I wouldn't call it the back of the envelope, but sit down and spend a few hours working through the numbers to be certain it really works or not. The other way to go about it is if this kind of approach has been used in other places, I don't know whether it has or not, whether it's been used in Provincetown or whatever, what has been their experience as it worked? And that would serve the same purpose, it's kind of a reality check.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned when we've worked, again, over a number of meetings with Gloria McPherson, our Housing and Sustainability Director, there are some standard ratios, there are some standards that have already been generated, and I'm just going to ask, again, let's look at this again with Gloria on the 22nd. But to answer exactly that question.
Okay.
And that's also pertaining to Warren's issue and the board's issue, that we have to find that balance point that we can restrict to a certain extent legally. We didn't know that we could, but we can restrict to a certain extent year-round occupancy and affordable and attainable, but we can't, but we also have to make it financially viable development, and I think, I think Gloria does have some statistics that she can review with us again.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
You've helped me a lot in saying often that in site plan review, et cetera, we have apparently great discretion as to what we can require. We don't have to set it all out in black and white, right?
In the zoning, we don't, yeah, yes.
So on that basis, I'm going to stop.
Okay. As long as you, you're sure, because it is, it is better, and in fact, required, that we bring all these questions up in open meeting. I think we like to avoid substantive discussions behind the scenes, so I would want to answer all your questions and have board discussion in open meeting. If you have any further questions, please bring them up again on April 22nd when we discuss it. And, but I think in, in most cases, what you've asked has been, the board has considered pretty thoroughly, you know, over many meetings and many months, and we've even done public outreach when we were in the process of developing the form-based code with Cape Cod Commission. Everything, at every point, they sent out surveys, and we reviewed the responses to the surveys. So there's quite a bit of information that's been integrated, but I do appreciate your questions. Okay. Other comments from the board before we move on?
I just saw that, and I can't find it now, where it said 4,000, oh, it's on the bottom of page, who makes these numbers that small? Eight?
Bottom of page eight.
Zone B, 4,000 square feet per building, five, and zone eight. Okay, I, I just, I, I think that's what we agreed to, but we're also talking about massing restrictions, and I'm wondering if, when we pass our massing restrictions three years from now, we have to come back and rewrite this, or how's that work? We can, but then we, I mean, I hate, you know we're not going to be able to get back into every single one of these little ones that we create and say, oh, by the way, we didn't mean that now, or, or we put in unless superseded by town-wide restrictions or something in there that.
I think there is a general statement here, isn't there in the bylaw, that if there's a conflict, that the.
More restrictive takes.
Yeah, that the, the, the points in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center take precedence.
If it's in conflict.
Yeah, if it's in conflict. Katie, do you have a comment on Bob's question? I mean, I think it's hypothetical because we haven't even gotten to the point where we're.
But also, maybe in different areas, districts, we want different massing.
Yeah, haven't even gotten to the point of considering it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are, are you saying that the massing that you're addressing in the subsequent subject is not just dealing, is not with single-family residential, it's for any structure, any zone, on any lot?
We haven't talked about that.
No. We were talking about residential.
That's a little bit too.
Yeah, so, yes, Katie.
And I'd just like to, like, go back to look at, we, we're talking about form here, we're actually prescribing what we want things to look like, and I think that that is kind of reducing the likelihood of massing issues by imposing all of these requirements with the, you know, with the, not just with the height, but the, you know, the length of the facade.
Yeah.
The different requirements, the transparency, I mean, those are all items that I think, you know, the board was considering all along when we talked about, you know, what we wanted this bylaw to look like.
Yes, and it addresses, yes, exactly, yes.
I, I think I've, I might have had a discussion with you about this when I was doing my build-out, my high-level analysis. I think it was brought to my attention that, I think the criteria on this says it's 60% is the maximum amount that the property can be developed, 40% is, I guess, greener on that. And that would include building as well as parking and that, so there's that limitation too, if you take a look at the setbacks and the criteria that I have here, you're not going to be able to put as big of a building as you might want to.
No, I, I get that.
Yeah, okay.
So why don't we cross that bridge when we come to it, Bob?
Okay.
Would that be okay?
This will be here.
Because we can, we'll be able to, and we haven't even gotten to the point where we've defined how we're going to approach that issue. And Charlene's right, we might approach it differently in different districts, so, so let's take a look when we get there. Yeah. Any other comments before we move ahead? Okay. So we also had scale and massing of residential structures, I just, I think we're still working on updating the research. And, yeah, Katie, did you have a comment?
That's correct, Bob and I had, we did have a meeting with Chrissy, our GIS planner, and so we'll be reporting back once we have additional information back from her.
Okay, and also, I think we're looking at that, again, just a reminder, we put on our priority list, housing initiatives, and we may be able to very soon have some housing initiatives that we can look at that would have a broader applicability to the whole town or to many districts, and we can also work on those, but, but anyway, yes, we'll, we'll continue with that. I think we've got our plates full with West Chatham, and just making sure we've put in all the refinements and put in all the final considerations that we need to on this one, and we'll be able to meet with Cape Cod Commission hopefully on April 22nd, and with Gloria, and go over everything again more thoroughly. And it's looking like the build-out analysis can go forward, yeah.
Yes, and I hope we'll have more information, at least to discuss a timeline with you on the 22nd or more shortly thereafter.
Yeah, and we're also moving forward on the visuals, yeah.
Yes, that's actually, I'm trying to incorporate everything all into, all into one.
Okay.
If we can.
From my perspective as chair, I mean, even though we've brought up a lot of issues tonight, this is really, I'm very excited about where we stand with this now. I think it's about ready to, when we get the visuals and the build-out analysis, I think it's ready to be brought before the public. I think what surprised us a little when we brought it out last October, people do forget, it's been in process a long time. I think we need to do a lot of public outreach and education when we get it in final form. And of course, we'll get another level of input again, and we may, you know, need to make additional revisions and changes again. But I think we're really close to that as soon as we get the build-out and the visuals, so I think we're looking really good for this, in my humble opinion. Great. Any other comments before I ask for our motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Art Spru, my second.
All right, let's do a vote, Art Spru.
Art Spru approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain approve.
Bob Worchafter.
Bob Worchafter approve.
Charlene Greenhalgh.
Charlene Greenhalgh approve.
Frank Scherer.
Frank Scherer approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve that we adjourn the meeting, let's note the time, looks like 7:12. And thank you, everyone, for participating, and enjoy the rest of the evening.